...with participation, I don't, there was no. Anyone who put up a comment saying none? On the bottom. Send calendar, Lauren, did you make that motion?
Any motion that the Board of Education approved? Yes. Second calendar, it says twenty-two dash one fourteen and twenty-two dash one eighteen. That's right connected.
Second. Seconded by Gladys, any? Seeing none, all those in favor?
My microphone is off.
I can use my.
Where's our technical support over there?
Did you hear anyone? They've been following our history of being allowed these. I started off with a pre-kept last week on the nineteenth degree chemistry class. This is the Morawalka area. Who was it?
It's your turn.
Ezekiel, can you put the mic a little closer to you? Is that there? Ken, is it on? Can you just double check? Thank you. Is that better?
Yeah.
Well, we start with the evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing us to learn and speak on behalf of Aces. Just a quick pre-kept from last week on the nineteenth degree chemistry class. This is the Morawalka area. We got to here last evening. We got to see the exhibits and experience the four year theater showing of Blue Planet Two. The actors. And today, on our Fridays, Aces staff teacher Jimenez and Daniel DePinto brought the students to Dodge Poetry Festival. I was fortunate enough to go on a poetry session, but this one Dodge Poetry. We got to hear a lot from the public staff there. Got to hear some great questions from the audiences. And. I have, oh, no, it was a great day. We learned quite a bit from them and look forward to going again next year.
Hello. Ace Spirit is taking place the week of October twenty-fourth through October twenty-eighth. Themes for each day are generated and voted on by the students and staff. Today was Red and Black Day to show school spirit by wearing our Aces school colors. On November ninth, Caltracola and Kaffee appear at this meeting. Will be taking astronomy class and the African-American, Latin and Latino studies classes to the American Museum of National History in New York City. In addition to the exhibits within the museum, students will be attending a show at the Hayden Planetarium to view worlds beyond Earth. Students will return at eight by five P.M. Aces would like the public to recognize Lulu, um, um, Tico for the Aces' hearts for caring and Cole Farantino as the Aces of space for hard work. I would also love to recognize our student award winners for the month of September. Their seniors, Pat Cruz and Tyler Share. Congratulations to you both. Thank you all for allowing us to share what's going on with our Aces community or family and hope that Aces even stay healthier and remain strong.
I think you're very helpful.
What do we got, any questions or?
Any questions from work, across our students?
Just a comment. Certainly, I want to thank you for always being here, giving your report, Katie and Ezekiel. It's nice to see that face behind that hood. And thank you for always coming and, you know, representing Aces. Thank you again and have a good night.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Action item A, go, did you make that motion?
Motion.
Motion that the Board of Education approve the Danbury Public School's strategic plan of two thousand twenty-two through two thousand twenty-seven in accordance with twenty-two dash one-one-nine of each year.
Second. Motion made by Richard, seconded by Kate. Any discussion?
Yes, I have. Yes. I have a problem with one of the action steps. The, uh, the teaching and learning, I feel it's too broad and it can encompass a lot of things and I just don't like it. Develop a process to ensure both curriculum and resources to support implementation are inclusive and culturally relevant. Inclusive and culturally relevant, I, I don't like that word. I think it's too broad and a lot of things we fall under there and I don't think lend itself to academic excellence. Um, I got a compliment, Dr. Lee, on her community report. She mentioned three words that she uses in there that I love about, um, improved academic excellence. I don't see anything in here about improving academic excellence. And so I have a problem with number three.
Anything else? I'm really interested.
Yeah, I'm just pulling it up.
It's action step number three. So.
Thank you.
Karen, maybe you could speak to some of the.
Yeah.
That call.
Sure, sure. So as.
So as part of some of the discussion that we had previously around those words being used and academic excellence, the strategic plan is part of additional accountability that the Danbury Public School is, is subscribed to follow. We have an accountability annex with academic achievement indicators that are set and growth targets that we follow. We need, we insist with the state of Connecticut, they're held pretty strict standards with the work that we're doing, our ability to articulate improvement efforts and then most important, the state, how we're using their money to fund achievement. When it comes to the culturally relevant piece, we have a very diverse school district. Culturally relevant ensures that we are meeting the needs of all of our students in a way that is meaningful to them and is relevant. It doesn't in any way reduce expectation in terms of achievement. It's meant to enhance and to provide access to rigorous curriculum that we're saying is meant for all kids. Culturally relevant, again, we give various home to over forty-two different languages spoken from many different countries. And so we meet the needs of the students that we serve and that's for all students. And it has really about in parcel to how we go about academic achievement and what that means for all of our students.
I have to say, Gabriel has always spent the time of immigrants, diverse immigrants. My father was, his father was an immigrant. He was the oldest of ten kids and he made sure he graduated as well as his siblings. So. The point being is that education should is for everybody and to say culturally, I'm worried about those different silos. We have, like you said, a diverse population. Are we going to have separate silos for each culture? That's what, you can't please one culture and not the other culture. That's what I'm getting at. We are a melting pot. We are diverse, but America is a melting pot. And I don't like things based on culturally relevant for academics. I think across the board, it should be one for all.
I can give you an example. So in our English language charts program, I have it here in twenty-five years, and I can pretty fairly say that for a large portion of that time, the books and the texts that we read were mainly from white male authors over time. And we have worked hard to create a range of literature from all different authors, from women authors, from Hispanic authors, authors, from black and, uh, uh, American, Native American Indian authors, so that all students that alone can connect to literature but benefit from the diversity of exploring those different genres and different literature and different authors. Those are important things for, for kids and it's pretty standard across many school districts now in terms of approach and engagement with students.
When I asked for a, um, a list of books, I was told everything was online, so I was not shared that information. And I find that interesting that now that I bring it up, that you mentioned that there is a diversity in a book reading. I would like a list of all the books that the students are reading in our school. I kindly request that.
Sure, we can, we can generate a list of the core texts in the district.
Yeah, I can do a bad to the cultural relevant piece. It really is going along with our equity policy in district, but also our acceptance for all students in the district. So it's really important that we make sure that a sense of community belonging here in Danbury is understanding not only yourself, but others around you. And so really it builds on that culture community and making all students feel like they belong here and they're part of something special here in Danbury. So it is everything against kind of putting people inside those. It's more one big community composed of a multitude of different races, ethnicities, socioeconomic status, you know, diverse parent populations and making sure that students are aware that not everyone is like themselves and that that's okay, that we value everyone in this community, we appreciate everyone, we respect everyone. So when we hear that culturally relevant, it's really making sure that students understand that not everyone's family or household looks like theirs and that that's okay. And their household may not look like the kids next to them and that's okay too. So it really brings a part of that sense of community belonging so that all students feel supported, nurtured and are able to grow here in this environment.
I'd like to open the floor to somebody else. Does anyone else would like to jump in? Any other questions or comments, Gladys?
Not so much. I'm trying to listen and try to understand. And I know that we all, when we talk about different words, have a different analogy as to how that word sounds and how we put it in a particular place for a group of people. You know, someone can look at me and say that, you know, I'm African-American and could call that something else. But I think, and I guess what I'm trying to say, as, as Board members, we can say that we disapprove, but can we really go in and change this? And how would we go about changing this to fit someone else? Because what might fit to Teresa might not fit my household. So, and I, and I think that's what Dr. Kevin Carroll was trying to say. And I know what fits someone else's household is not going to fit mine's. So, and we have to look at Danbury and how words are used. And, you know, they might use it one way at Weston, it might not be the right way to use here at the Board of Ed meetings and anything that we're doing. So, you know, that's just my comment.
Thank you. Anybody else have a question or comment?
So I, I understand the concept of cultural relevancy from my own position, but I think, Karen, who could maybe explain a little bit that cultural relevancy? As I understand it, it would be within the frameworks that the state already created. So we're not going, we're not going outside those frameworks. We're working within them to create cultural relevance. So it doesn't mean taking anything from curriculum that means adding to it.
Adding to it, right. Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, and, and, and thank you for.
Thank you. You know, and as mentioned previously, this is, these are not just, these are, it's a nationwide attempt and even the local attempt in Connecticut to make sure that we're addressing the needs. And to your point, thank you for, for reminding me of that. That is a, you know, that has been an initiative for quite some time in Connecticut to the point where the Board has also adopted policy, as Kelly mentioned, around those areas. But again, it's, we have common core state standards, we have NGSS standards, we have all kinds of standards, IST standards, and being culturally relevant is a way to access and tap into those standards for all kids. And so it's really not, and I know, I think the word maybe was used before there, the concern around watering down the curriculum. And if anything, it's really meant to, to enrich the curriculum and bring more substance to it over time. Thank you.
I'm just looking at that same page. The action step that, that is, is causing a little concern here. And I note on the left-hand side there, it says strengthen and make curriculum accessible for all and include enrichment and interventions to improve academic outcomes. So I guess I look at that and take away from it that exactly what you just said for us, Dr. Casemiro, which is that by improving the quality of the curriculum and making it more inclusive, we're actually enriching and creating opportunities for students to improve their academic outcomes, which I think we all probably agree is what we're here to do. So, thank you.
So just for clarification, so we're not watering down the rigor of the curriculum. We are just making it more accessible to different, different students that are, that are here at Danbury.
Right.
Carrie, did you have a quick?
I just want to say, I don't see how culture hasn't done anything with that.
Anything else from any other Board member?
There's, there's three. I'm sorry, Miss Stewie.
I'm glad you did.
There's three little stars there that's telling me that this district is, is doing whatever it can. And those, those three stars are the bullet points that we really should be looking at and dealing with our students. So, you know, I can look at that and, and say, okay, we can move on, but, you know, I just want to say, you know, we can't satisfy everyone, but we can listen to what another person's opinion is. But I'm looking at the three bullet points that are here and I think they're well implemented here and put here in this teaching and learning document. And I hope that we continue to move forward on those three bullet points.
Thank you, Gladys.
Just say one more.
Sure.
One more thing, just to try to, another way of example perhaps. When we differentiate for children, we've been doing this for the end of time here in Danbury, we either do it by content, process, or the products that we create for kids. And those can change and we can engage students also by their interest. So if I'm having a hard time engaging a student in text or in reading, as a teacher, I need to be empowered to choose a text that may, I may not, that the curriculum may have not provided in the sense that, say, this is a similar story, but of content that this child can relate to so that they can gauge in the text and then we can help build their comprehension. So it's similar to if I pulled a, a story about the Yankees right now, if I have a thirteen year old boy who doesn't want to read and is not into, not into reading, but if I pull a story, text about Aaron Judge hitting his home run, I can bet you I can get him at the table and make this relevant to that child and to that student. And that's no different than any child that we, that we work with, is that we're saying that you have to take into consideration the backgrounds that students come from, the interests that they have, and we know we have a variety of backgrounds. And as teachers, we have to take that information into account so we can engage our students because, so that we can tap into those standards. And if anybody has taught a middle school child, and I did that for several years, you have to get really good at pulling the tricks out and finding engaging texts that meet the needs of, of kids and their interests. So it's, you know, beyond culture, it's just making it relevant for kids and tapping into the background knowledge that they have and our students come from a variety of backgrounds.
May I, Chair Corcama? I mean culturally relevant is it's my understanding that we have classes that are multicultural. Are we segregating cultures to teach different cultures a relevant plan or will the curriculum be relevant for some but not relevant for others with a multicultural classroom?
We don't, we don't segregate our kids. Our kids are all heterogeneously grouped in classes, except for a very highly specialized curriculum. By legal class, when we first come, our hearing commerce class, they might group of students who are at the language, global language acquisition and skill. But when we're reading stories, we're just making sure that we're, we're attending to a variety of stories from a variety of authors, from a variety of backgrounds and interests. So it's really not about saying, we're going to take all of our students who come from Guatemala and read them this story, and we're going to take all of our students who come from Peru and read them this story, and are we going to take our students who come from Puerto Rico and read them that, another story? That's not what it means at all. It means that we're tapping into the interests of the students that we have, we're providing them a rich variety of texts across multiple genres from different authors that celebrate women as scientists who aren't necessarily celebrated, Hispanic women as scientists, not just certain group. So we, and, and we don't, um, we don't limit students by, by what we put in front of them. And we put a variety of information in front of those so that they can have great exposure to the world.
And not all the books are about the Yankees.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
Okay. Anything else?
I just have a quick comment. The district is large as ours, twelve thousand plus students, and we have to understand not all of these students learn the same. And so if we, to achieve these three stars here, we need to allow those action steps in order to get to these goals. And so I, I, I think that, you know, reading, we can't read too much into them. We have to rely on our teachers to, to do the work that they need to do. And, and all of these steps that they have are just very important for them to achieve these three stars. So for me, the important thing is to get to these three goals in teaching and learning and the professionals and the teachers in those classrooms with those thirty-plus students, with thirty students that may all learn differently or may need different techniques in order to attain the same lesson. You know, we have to allow them these action steps to get there.
And I think the goal is to make the connection in order to achieve those. Anything else?
I was in there.
I'm going to say, you know what, I think it's the word that's like a little intimidating, right? But when you, like Louisa was saying, when you're really breaking it down, it's almost like you're breaking it down to the individual student, right? And that intervention, whatever that may take, instead of it being overall box that you're kind of following a certain curriculum. But of course, it is important that we make sure that, you know, that we consider all cultures, of course. And then I can forget, for me, we're looking at really breaking it down to the individual student, what that individual might mean, not so much an overall curriculum shift in a sense, it is, but it is, you know what I mean?
Yeah, and it's, and it's, it's both really, right? And so it's, so in, in overall, you would want your child to be exposed to, most people move to Danbury for the exposure to the, the background of wealth of knowledge and experiences that are here that make the city as rich as it is. And so having, you know, our, our kids, I believe, our students are better off from having attended here and growing up around such a rich environment and have learned, learning about all different cultures. And, and it, it really makes them better individuals and well-rounded when they leave here. And they come back and talk to us about students that they've gone off to college with and rigid thinking and, and, and they appreciate the education that they get here. So we continue to do our best to continue to nurture all the kids and make sure that they have, that we're not limiting them to a, a, a specific, you know, group of, of text or literature. We try to cover the bases and try to make sure that we're providing a world-class education here and environment through that exposure.
I mean, I agree with Teresa. It would be great to see the material. We talk about so much about curriculum and how we're changing it and what we're doing, but it's hard and we don't know where we are in our curriculum and how much maybe we have to incorporate or, you know, connect.
It's a process.
Yeah.
So it's a process over time. So you, you don't flip a curriculum overnight.
Right.
And identify, you know, it is, as I'm planning and as I meet the standard, I'm keeping in mind that I need to, as I'm selecting texts. And I'm looking for passages for students to read, to practice, that I'm not just picking the same type of literature and text over and over again that I am providing a variety of texts and experiences from different authors, from, on different topics with different, with different men.
I think it's just helpful if we were actually be able to see what we're talking about and then we would actually know that growth within like years of limitation or something, right? I mean, just to get a better understanding would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, I'm going to hold off because it's going to come out the wrong way. I'll rethink it. See, I'm learning, Ms. Cooper, I have to say it.
I just wanted to convert to Karen, that's when you're talking about general and curriculum, it's music and art as well.
Of course.
It's all of the, it's all of the curriculum. It's not just English, language arts.
Absolutely.
Favorite.
Science.
Or science.
Science, scientist.
You're allowing teachers and educators to bring cultural pieces. Or orchestra or art.
Absolutely.
And then I think that's wonderful.
Attend one of our art shows, music shows, you will see it, see a reflection of that.
So this just broadens what our teachers can do with our students. It's a wonderful way to do it.
And bringing those, we've said it, but bringing those things in sparks interest in the children, creates excitement, and then also creates that with the teachers. So it's just a good way to do it.
Good teaching.
It's a good way to get there.
And for the questions and the discussion? I think I have a motion that's been moved and seconded, thoroughly discussed. All those in favor? Hi. Any opposed? One opposed? Any abstentions?
Stay.
One abstention? Motion carries. Oh, did you want to?
I'm going to stay.
Abstained?
Yeah.
Two abstentions?
Yeah.
Motion still carries. Action B. Louisa, would you like to?
Motion that the Board of Education accept July through September, two thousand twenty-two financial report in accordance with twenty-two dash one-twenty, the twenty-two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Or seconded by Ralph? Any discussion?
Discussion? Looking at twenty-two dash one-twenty, which is the financial report. John, if you could just expand momentarily on the short call of our, I see you, Robby. You identified some needs of, of district and what more safety advocates in for, I guess unintended or unprepared expenses, about two hundred twenty-two, two hundred twenty-two thousand dollars, twenty thousand dollars. And I understand that, but if we could just expand momentarily on our short call of eighty-four thousand dollars in transportation over time. Karen, you there, okay? Karen, you there, okay?
Yes.
There, there were two programs we didn't just in budget for enough. One was the, the program for teenage mothers. It's been very successful for a long time. We had to add plus, we just hadn't brought that one through the budget together, so that one. hadn't brought that one through the budget together. So that was maybe half of it. And the other half was a program we've done for many years in the summer for high school students in collaboration with Westcon. It's pre-college program, one from now to six weeks over there, the number of students attend, and we just didn't budget for that either. So those two were called unexpected, more like unbudgeted expenses. Thank you, sir.
Any further discussion, questions? I will try your minds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extension? Motion carries unanimously. Action C. Julie, would you like to say?
War by law, 9124-RECORDINGSECRETARY. Motion that War by Education accept for the first reading. War by law, 9124-RECORDINGSECRETARY, as recommended by the Policy Committee and the Congress with 22-29, page 50.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
A second motion.
Seconded by Gladys. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries unanimously. Superintendent's report, Mr. Walston.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. So Superintendent's goals, update college career readiness, summative assessment, data presentation. Cara Wanza joins us two times a year, at least, for some of the data overview. The board might be called last year, but the last time she joined us, we were in the Black Box. And a lot of the data that Cara was referring to was data, quite frankly, that the state was saying that was inadequate and not necessarily valid information because of exams and assessments being taken during COVID. Being one year now removed from that, and we have 21, 22 data we can report out on, and I believe at least one of the Cara's up there anyway are gonna also speak to the recent data results that are released nationwide, just to give you a better picture of how things are going nationally. And I'm going to move in this position so I can also see the presentation.
Good evening. Thanks for having me here tonight, board members, and Assistant Cabinet, Superintendent Walston. I'm really thrilled to be here and be able to talk about exactly what we're talking about before academic achievement, how we're thoughtfully planning for students and to meet their, the student outcomes that we're setting and those goals. This is a result of the 21, 22 school year. So this is the summative data that were part of last year's standardized test. So everything kind of comes in during the summer and, or even early fall ahead of time. But these components that you'll see tonight are also a part of our Accountability Index, which I will come back and speak about once that's released by the state. The last time that was released was 2018, 19 school year, but we anticipate it probably in December or January. So these will all be a part of it. Next slide.
And so just a reminder that you're looking at the data from last year, which aligns to Mr. Walston's strategic plan, as well as his personal goals. So remember those to be Goal One, increased staff capacity and support, the improvement of tier-one curriculum, and meeting the needs of learners in the form of academic acceleration, deepening the understanding of grade-level standards, and social, emotional, and personalized engagement within the curriculum. And many of those things we're still working on may be worded a little bit differently, as you saw tonight in our latest strategic plan. And then Goal One B is to increase faculty and access to a rigorous curriculum. Again, part of our discussion tonight lends itself into that as well. Increase the programming opportunity while reducing academic achievement gap for literacy and math in our high-needs students.
Before I get started, I just want to refer to two terms while I use probably throughout the presentation, one being high-needs students. And for those of you who've listened to my presentation in the past, you'll know that F representative of three subgroups in our student population. So it's students who are economically disadvantaged or qualified for free and reduced lunch, students with disabilities who receive special education services, and/or students who are English learners. And so you can either be in all three categories and be considered high-needs, or you could just be in one and be considered high-needs. So I might be a special education student who's also an English language learner, and/or I can just be a special education student and be counted in that subgroup. The other term that the state of Connecticut and nationally that folks are starting to use and they'll refer, you'll hear a lot right now in districts is MLO. And so you'll see it kind of used throughout the presentation. So we'll say English language learner, or English learner, ELL or EL. But now a term that you'll see most across the state of Connecticut is multi-language learner. That's students are continuing to learn in their own primary language, but also learning another language as well. So that's what the multi-language learner represents. So, oh, guys, I keep thinking I have, sorry. So in looking at district enrollment, this October one collection, and as many of you know, we do use that in all of our grant reporting, right, and how the state looks at our demographics as well. So if you were to go on a public site and look at the enrollment numbers, this is what it will represent for this October collection. That's about 267 more students than we saw last year. 217 of those are at the high school. And our current total number is 12,110 for the October collection, with 48% free and reduced lunch, 34% MLO, and 14% of those students are with disabilities. So just to give you a picture, as of today, we're already at 12,147. We're increasing our enrollment as we move throughout the year. And we typically see another uptick in enrollment in January. So. So I did break it out a little bit for our next slide, just to see at different levels what our demographics look like specifically. And this is our pre-K enrollment, and it's important to note, most of our students, and Kelly can speak to this as well, that our students in preschool and in some, in many classrooms are students with disabilities. So we have students with disabilities and typical peers, and then we also have school readiness programs which have both as well. Our free reduced lunch and pre-K is at 40%, so slightly lower than the district, but we do not identify students as English learners until kindergarten. So it's not that those students are not currently in those classrooms, it's just that according to the state, we identify those students for them to receive ESL services only unless they reach kindergarten. So that's important to know. Thank you. K5, our free reduced lunch number is at 46%. Our total enrollment is at 5,444.
Sorry.
Can you go back one page to the pre-K slide?
I just wanted to highlight for you for the preschool, that is a population that is growing very, very rapidly. And I think it's just important to know, we had opened Grandville just a little bit over a year ago, and we are at full capacity there. We are also, we've added one preschool special education classroom every year for the last four years. And the students that we are receiving into the preschool program continue to have high level of needs. So we've added things like speech and language, occupational therapy, and so forth, to meet the needs of those young learners. And the reason why it's important is that those students are also going to integrate into our K12 population and continue to have some of those same needs which we will need to support in an ongoing fashion. But as we look, you know, demographic enrollment growth and so forth, preschool is certainly one of the factors that is not always captured well in our demographic studies. In fact, some of them just don't attend to preschool. And that's understandable, as it represents primarily a student with disability condition. That's very hard to predict. But it also is something that for spacing, staffing, size, capacity, that just needs to be on our radar as it continues to grow. And those students at the preschool level integrate, come into the preschool program upon their third birthday. So they don't enter like kindergarten. If you turn three in October, you start school in October. If you turn three in February, you start school in February. So it's a continuous flow throughout the entire school year, which is unique, as most of our students generally have kindergartners, first graders, or so forth. Parents, of course, always have an option to delay the start if they so choose. We sometimes see that if there's only a couple days left of a school year, they'll say, "We'll start even next year." Or students that turn three right before the Christmas holiday break, for example, they may wait till January. So we are obligated legally to provide programming to them. So we have, in addition to the special education preschool programs, we also have AMEES preschool programs that are located at our new annex at Ellsworth, and we're still maintaining three special education programs at Sacred Heart, as well as preschool readiness classrooms there. So we'll run that space for a little while.
Thank you. No, that's important to note, for sure. So our K5 population, where we keep those students transitioned to, we're looking at 12% of students with disabilities, 45% who are considered MLO, and 46% free and reduced lunch. It's important to note that some schools at elementary level are at 62% to 66% multi-language learners. So we're really at this, it's very diverse depending on the school. It can be a lot higher, that number overall. And I have to note that grade one is our highest enrolled grade right now in K5. We have about 1,000 students, and that's fluctuating back and forth over and over in Denver. Should we want to do questions now, or?
I just, this question, you said some could be in all categories.
That's right.
Are they counted in?
Correct.
The same people would be counted in same age?
Correct. Yes, that's important to know. Thank you for bringing that up. So I could, I could be in the economically disadvantaged group, but then still also counted in the multi-language learner. Yes. When we look at the high-needs, it's only counted once. So you'll see that in a little bit.
The students, excuse me.
Sure.
The students with disabilities, I know there's a process that the system goes through to identify these students.
Yes.
Have our numbers always been this high? Because, you know, I can't remember being there.
Sure. Yeah. So from last year, they've increased about a percentage, but they've been steadily increasing over time.
We've increased about 500 students in about six or seven years. So we are steadily increasing. Our percentage of students with special needs has always hovered between that 13 and 14%. But as our district enrollment grows, our students with special needs enrollment grows, we are already 40 students above what you see on that slide here today. So we're continuing to grow and add. We've seen a lot of influx into the district. We're also seeing a lot of identification. We're seeing an increase in referrals, meaning those students in which we suspect may have disabilities. And some of that we suspect is pandemic-related as well. So we're gonna see a little uptick, and I expect it to kind of dissipate. But we're getting a lot of students from other districts that are moving in, already identify as students that are eligible, and we're legally mandated to implement those services immediately.
Now, let me ask another dumb question, because I guess I should move this. At any point, a student that's identified as disability becomes a student with, that does not have a disability?
Yes. Yeah. So legally, the process is, is every three years, we have to re-determine eligibility for a student of services. So if a student qualifies in kindergarten, again, three years later, we come back and do updated evaluations to see if that student still needs a service. So once identified as a special ed student, does not mean you'll always need services. In fact, that frequently will change. Sometimes we'll have students exit as they've closed that gap and they've obtained the skills that they need to. And other times, we will have students that will continue to qualify from preschool all the way through high school. The PPT team, which is the team that makes those decisions, always includes a school-based team and the parents. And as the student gets older, they're part of that team as well. They have the right to request evaluations happen more frequently if they so desire. So if it's only two years after the student was identified, we're seeing remarkable improvements in the area of reading, and we suspect that that student no longer needs an intense level of services, we can do it sooner, but no less than every three years.
My last question. This number 1,668, does that include Kelly, elementary, all elementary students, all the students?
Yes. Pre-K 12. That number is representative of all of our special education students. And I can tell you on my counter, we're approaching 1,700 already. So we're on the move. You're welcome.
Okay, so I'm gonna keep going, and then if we wanna, we totally, and we can ask follow-up questions, that probably will be, because they might, there might be further questions that are answered during the presentation. So yes, 1,668 is students with all the disabilities, and I think are all students with disabilities. I think it is important to note, though, that although the percentage, what Kelly said stays the same, or hovers around the same number, we are getting more students overall. So more students we have to deserve, yeah. Okay, great. So if we go to the 612, that would be great, the next one. Thank you. So 6,408 students, 612 in our district, 51% free and reduced lunch, 27% MLO, and 13% students with disabilities. As students, every year, take a last-next test to track their language proficiency and how they're acquiring English. And as students are older, typically, they've been in services longer. So we see students exit the ESL status for receiving ESL services due to their acquiring the level of proficiency for exiting. Okay? So that number is slightly over there. So I just, the next slide, I just sent the count just so sometimes to the point of the percentage looking about the same, just so you see what this looks like at certain schools and how many students that is. The reason why the number is slightly different in the bottom right for the grand total, that is due to the fact that we have out-of-district students. So this is just our students placed in our current schools. Great. So the next piece we're gonna start to talk about is the summative assessments. And I just want to know, and Superintendent Walston brought it up a little bit earlier, if you have been listening to the news or watching it recently, you'll know that NAEP just came out with their results findings, which is the National Association of Education Progress. And so that's randomly selected, we're before the eighth graders across the country. Our schools participate in that as well every year and every time they administer the test. And so they'll randomly select a fourth grader, eighth grader in our school system to participate. So these were national scores that were, are being talked about. And they're, for the first time, talking about really the results and what we're seeing as outcomes as a result of the pandemic for students. And what they're calling is a massive decline in, for two totally eighth-grade math, at eight percentage points and about five in fourth grade. So that's from the start of the pandemic. Also, a slight in reading for both, respectively, fourth and eighth grade, around 3%. But some of the scores that they're seeing are similar to when the test first started being administered in 1992. So we're looking at the entire nation responding to this critical moment of history when schools have not experienced closure and other, and other factors at this point. So this is clearly a national issue that every school district is struggling, as well as Danbury. So these key findings that we take away from the summit of data are really giving us our action steps of how we need to respond to it and what to do next. And that's alongside the superintendents, well, the assistant superintendents, and the chief of schools, but really specific plans with the principals of how to respond to the student need. So we'll get to that a bit at the end. But to give you a brief idea of where we sit within those national numbers, the Connecticut, this is just kind of a backdrop, so you guys have it for what Connecticut SAT, SAT School Day is. That is a requirement by the state of Connecticut that all seventh graders participate in this. This was the first This was the first year that it was administered digitally. So that was quite a transition and a big feat for the high schools to participate in and, and really conduct those assessments digitally all at once. So it took a lot of planning, and it was definitely a change from how the students had seen, the students who've taken the PSAT in the past, how they see the assessment. So we'll be digital again moving forward. Go to the next slide. This is just our trend data as it looks for ELA in math for the Connecticut School Day. So certainly, other students take this assessment at different points in the year. And for those of you who've had children in, in high school, they'll know that they might sign up for a Saturday assessment. This is the snapshot of how our students do it all in the same day. So you're supposed to have a 95% participation rate to ensure that you're not excluding students based on maybe where their level is. And so the state requires that everyone participate. So in general, our ELA whole group for 2022 was at 38%, and our math was at 15%. Respectively, ELA went down 2% from last year and, and down 4% in math. There were, there were other, overall, the state average from the pre-pandemic to now went down 6%. So they've seen a decline as well in, in that 6 percentage points. So I, you know, there, there's a couple of different things to be looking at here. We break down to Black, African-American, for students identified. We saw an increase in those, in the student scores for identifying in that racial subgroup, a 14 percentage point increase actually. And then in ELA and in math, respectively, 7. So we're continuing to see, you know, some bright spots of where students are increasing, but at the same time, clearly, other places that it needs to be addressed. At the bottom, you'll see the high needs and non-high need students. So that's, you're in one or the other. You're either identified as an economically disadvantaged student, a multilingual learner, or a student with disability, or you're not. So those are those two. Okay, so you're in one bucket or the other. So our high need students performed at 22% and our non-high needs at 61%, hitting the benchmark. And then for our high need students, 7% for math and 22% for our non-high needs. Those benchmarks are determined by the State Department of Education. Next generation science standards are where, you know, students take an assessment in fifth, eighth, and 11th grade. So it's not taken by every grade level. We can move to the next slide, please. Great. And so in fifth grade, from last year, the 2021, to this year, we went up 5 percentage points, declined in eighth grade from 6% and then 8% in 11th. But I will say that the, the 2021 are less reliable. We did not have, there were, there wasn't a requirement during that year of participation rate. So not every student took the assessment that would technically take it. So we talked about that a little bit last year. But these are, are the results. And it's important to remember, these are non-cohortid students. So we, they're not the same kids, just the same grade level. So smarter balance is what we're used to hearing. It's our smarter balance assessments, and people call it ESPA, ESPA. It's required by all sorts of acronyms, of course, for education. It's required by the state of Connecticut for us to administer it in grades three through E. It's a computer adaptive test, and there's also a performance task in math. We look at both achievement and growth in ESPA. So the, we get credit for actually, for our proficiency levels, our performance index, as well as how well students grow from one grade level to the next. During the 1920s, school year is not administered. So you'll not see those obviously reflected here. And during 2020, 2021, it was, it was administered both remote and in person. So those, when you're looking for public data, it's not reported with the rest of the data sets. Because I did include it here, so you would have it, but they, they consider it a very different assessment from what the other students might have taken, because there were two modalities for it. It was administered all in person during the 21 and 22 school year. And if you receive a level three or four, you're considered at proficiency or above proficiency. So you'll see here, we broke out similarly to the NGSS, how students did in third and fourth and fifth grade over the last three recorded years. And so if we took those students, so you'll see right away, from our third grade, we, we increased 10 percentage points in proficiency. In fourth grade, we increased four. And in fifth grade, we increased six. But if we, if we look at a rough cohort, so again, those are all different students. If we look at a rough cohort, you would have to look at third graders, how they did last year. So the middle bar graph to the last bar graph in the fourth grade, right? So that means students actually, the rough cohort, so the same students increased actually nine percentage points, which is, which is a positive. In fourth to fifth grade, they went up 12 percentage points. And fifth to sixth, they decreased by eight. Overall, the state of Connecticut from the pre-pandemic is 7 to 8% decline, so similar to what people are seeing nationwide. So the next one is the middle school, thank you. The middle school ESPA ELA. And what we're looking at in sixth grade was a decrease from one percentage, about one percentage point, seventh grade, six, and eighth grade, eight. But if we move that to a rough cohort of students, you would have six to seven is actually, they remained at 29%. So their proficiency stayed the same. So in sixth grade in 2021, they scored 29% of students proficient. And in seventh grade, 29%, 29% of those students were proficient. So that would be, you know, no net change. Seventh to eighth, they did go down actually 3%. Okay, so seventh grade in 2021, and then eighth grade at 32% from 2021, 2022. So the next slide is talking about how our subgroups did overall. There are five million ways we break out and look at this data, but I tried to just give you a glimpse and a snapshot of what that looks like for our students who are considered high needs. And we had our high need students, again, so that's, that counted once in those subgroups, and they go up one percentage point. Our students with disabilities went up four, as well as our multilingual learners. In math, same, same way, everything is broken out in grades three through five there. So we saw a 12 percentage point increase in third, nine in fourth, and seven in fifth, if you're just looking at the grade levels. If we're looking at a rough cohort of students, we went up 7% moving third to fourth grade, fourth to fifth. We went up five percentage points, as well as fifth to sixth, we decreased by three. Go to the next slide. If we continue that rough cohort, sixth to seven, we increased by three percentage points. And seven to eight, we decreased by five. If you were just looking at grade level, obviously, six stayed the same. Seven went up one percentage, and eight went up three. And then the subgroup, again, broken out, high need students went up by three, students with disabilities went up two, and our MLL students went up by four. So the next, the, a large amount of our, uh, a large portion of our accountability index is really looking at growth. So if you know, and then have been a part of the community a while, you've known we've had many schools of distinction and that honor. And typically, it's how we grow students. And it's particularly in fourth and fifth grade. So smarter balance, the state looks at how students score in one year and then what gains they made in the next year. So at each moment in time, how many points they increase their scale score on a test, whether it's ELA or math. So just real quickly, this is what we talked about. It's called the average percent target achieved, or percentage of target achieved. And I'm just going to talk briefly about it. But usually, I present multiple ways of growth, but I thought it would be great just to dive into this one to, to, for you to see kind of the bigger picture for the district. So we're talking about average percent target achieved. We're talking about how far a student got to their growth target. So if you move to the next slide, it can help us. So when we talked about students at levels three and four are considered proficient. So level three, if you look at the top row there, it has all the levels of ESPA. Level three is that you met it, level four, you exceeded, okay? Level one is not met, and level two is approaching. So within those levels, they all, they also break out the scale score. Okay, so if you were looking to the left, all the way to the left underneath third grade, 2,189 is the lowest range, to 2,380 is the highest scale score of level one. They break that out into low level and high level one. And the state gives you a target and says, say you take this in third grade, or, and you are, you scored a 2,388. We expect you to grow 59 points.
Can we quick clarify?
I apologize.
Sure.
We need growth in achievement. So if you're, if you're setting a goal at, let's just use numbers, number four, and a child is at number one, if they grow one or two, you consider that growth. So that's where you base the percentage on of growth, correct?
Correct, so yes, we always want to move kids that way.
Right, right.
The state gives us these actual targets. And say, if you're a low level, if you're a low level two and you scored a 2,338 when you were in third grade, we expect your scale score to at least grow by 59 next year.
Okay, so what constant progress is what we're?
Constant progress. And very specific to what your score is, right? So because, then this is research based, based on how students in Connecticut performed on the smarter balance over time. And so they think, they think this is the, what we should expect for a year's worth of growth. If we want to move a student a level, we'll need maybe more aggressive growth. But they should at least be honest. So if I get to 59, if I am that student in the third grade and I hit 59, I hit 100% of my target, right? If I'm a student and my scale score, if I'm a level two high, which is the next one, and I'm expected to grow, you're expected to grow 60, and you only got 30 points, you're at 50% to your target, right? So you're 50% of the way there. If you and I are only in a class together, what the average percent target achieved is that we'll average our scores together. So now, our class is at 75%. So 100%, 50% average together, average the class together, we're 75% average target achieved.
Thank you.
A little tricky, but yeah.
This one, we, we use percentages of anybody. It's not necessarily the target.
Right.
It's, it's the increase.
The increase, how far you got to your goal.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's good to clarify where, you know, we're, we're not hitting it, but we're kind of around there.
And it depends on where you are on the scale that you're expecting to grow. So everybody, so, you know, I always think about this too, like, am I a marathon runner? Am I half marathon runner? Am I a 5K? On a lucky day, I could do a 5K. Like, I'd have to really try. So like, so, you know, depending on where you are is the expectation of how far you'll run. If you complete what you, what the expected run was, you're 100%. If you don't cross that finish line, maybe you got three quarters of the way there, and so you're at 75%, right? Okay, we're going to give it a try. Here we go, the next slide, please. So this is how we did overall for our ESPA growth, okay? And I did include both 1819, which is the last time we could have growth. Okay, so we didn't take it in 2021. So last year, we didn't report any growth scores because they didn't take it the year before, okay? So 1819 was the last reportable year we could have growth. And now we can report it this year because they also took it in 2021. So they've been 21, 22. And so when we look at these results, you know, the state gives us the target and like, you at least want to be to 75%. There are some grade levels that are 100% that are hitting that 100% average percentage target achieved. So if we, if we average all of our fourth graders, this year, we were at 71%. The state overall for grade four was at 68%. So we're outperforming the state in our growth in fourth grade. In fifth grade, in, in ELA, I'm sorry, I should clarify. This was in English Language Arts, we were at 74%. So that means averaging all our fifth graders together, they got on average 75% to their growth target, okay? Sixth grade was at 54%, seventh grade 50%, and eighth grade was at 48%, and those are the lowest state target, the state averages. If we look at our students who are eligible for free reduced lunch, that was 57%, which is like, right in line with where we were in 1819. Our scores are almost exactly the same for our subgroups. 60% for our MLL students and 48% average percent target achieved for our students with disabilities. So if we move to math, state is our concept. Here, fourth grade really outperformed the state as well as the rest of the district, honestly, for math. 86% average percent target achieved, 80% in fifth grade. And in sixth grade, 43%, seventh grade 56, and eighth grade 42. Sixth and seventh grade was at higher rates of growth than pre-pandemic. With our eligible for free reduced lunch, that was increased from pre-pandemic from 55% to 60% average target achieved. And then including MLL, 3% increase with our students with disabilities remaining at 51%. So that's comparing our pre-pandemic numbers. So now, is there a follow-up? I know that growth is, is a further clarification.
So Kara, the fourth graders in 2018, 19 are the seventh graders in 21, 22, correct?
So I'm sorry, the fourth graders in 1819?
The seventh graders.
Yes. I just needed to say quickly, yes. Yes.
It's a big drop. I, I know what happened in between.
For sure.
I had one of those fourth graders.
Sure, but, sure. And I, I think, you know, there, and we're, we're going to get into NACS's district response around the pieces, yes, they're the same kids. But if you look at the way our seventh graders were growing pre-pandemic, they actually outperformed the growth that the students had pre-pandemic. So it's, it's an interesting context for understanding what maybe their middle school is experiencing, experiences with the added pandemic, knowing that they are outgrowing the students we had pre-pandemic in that grade level. Not saying it doesn't need a response, but just also thinking of it in that way. And we are going to get into some of the responses that, to this data that we immediately put into place, seeing this data and knowing at the middle school, we need to really understand deeply where students are in their progression towards standard and mastery standard. So Kara's going to speak to that, but I, I absolutely hear what you're saying.
I just had a quick question.
Sure.
And we're talking about pre-pandemic.
Yeah.
If I recall on my time on the board previously, when we used the numbers as an overall district
Yeah.
and compare schools, which I'm not going to mention names, my recollection is most of the schools were never over 50% with the exception of a few. So the trend- So the trend, so the pandemic actually helps us out because the big drop, hey pandemic, man, big drop. But the trend, if you go back, that was 2013, 2014 to 2018, we've always maintained that 50% or lower proficient in both. So to my question that was gonna come out long, still gonna come out long before, is I'm glad that we're changing up some of the things to do because for the six, five or six years before the pandemic,
Yes.
we were flat.
So that's interesting.
So that's, so thank you pandemic.
Yeah, I appreciate that comment. I think that, you know, it's interesting to look at, and there are schools that are above 50% now. And so that is important to know.
Correct.
And thank you for reminding us. Yeah, maybe, yeah. So depending on the grade level. So, and one thing that we know and that there, you know, the national research around where students are at this moment in time is that what the pandemic did was exacerbate some of the gap that we already saw. So what was there existing, it really just exacerbated it, right? And so made it more present, so it is more like, and now how do we respond? Because it's this very, it's this moment in history where we need to be innovative about how we respond to these numbers. And what we are hearing nationally is that people are doing a lot of the right things, but just not at the right level or highest level dosage that needs to be done. And that becomes challenging around staffing. This is a national issue I'm talking about, not Danary, but they, you know, talk about staffing shortages, absenteeism that's happening nationally, and employment insecurity for folks.
Right, so my concern is coming out of the pandemic, when you have kids that are one or two grade levels behind.
Yes.
I'm assuming we're coming up to the district.
We are.
And you're gonna tell us that's gonna be all good and...
Well, we're gonna tell you what we're doing as a response to like evidence-based decision-making. Like, you can talk around best practice a million different times, but what we really need to be doing is responding to the students sitting in front of us right now, maybe. So I'm gonna let Kara move to that piece and then shoot up her question.
So, you know, I think it's important to point out, some of the, you know, there are definitely some highlights in the data comparatively to, certainly, we always aim to do better. Every time we look at data, we look at it relative to what we know is happening in our efforts. But also, you know, we definitely wanna get back to pre-pandemic levels and even before. But one of the things that we did important to point out is that we had some red spots kind of at the elementary level. And I think it's a testament to where we put some resources. We added student support specialists over the last couple of years. We've added a phonics program that was structured and more rigorous than what we had in place. And the target of that intervention, we're targeting fourth and fifth grade, actually. We're the primary targets of students needing some additional support. And also providing some additional programs that we didn't have access to before in terms of the number of resources that we need to implement them. So it has been a tremendous amount of effort around creating intervention systems, and we have invested in those areas. And so I'd like to think that where we paid some investment, we're seeing, we are seeing some results in those areas. But certainly, we have plans to grow, to make improvements, so.
Is there a specific percentage?
Well, you know, year by year, we wanna see growth year over year, for sure. And so, you know, the last couple of years, obviously, have been very hard to predict. And I think one of the biggest responses that we did as a district was, we spent a lot of time looking at data, a variety of data sets. And what we know that we needed more than anything else was to get really clear diagnostic data first almost to the level where we can prescribe what students need down to that level. So we invested, and you'll see it listed here a few times in a couple of different categories. We invested heavily in an I-Radi assessment system, which is both norm and criteria reference. So norm is getting information around how students of similar peer, inferior group age, and time, any point in time are testing, how they're performing. And then the criteria piece is like, here's the standard for what we wanna see in grade. And so now you get really good information about where students fall relative to their peers, typical peers, but then where they are at the standard. And that speaks to this need of, you know, growth and proficiency and everything in between about where students need to perform. And then having the diagnostic tools to be able to pinpoint group students, like students together to create strategy groups and to apply strategies on specific standards where there may be some foundational information.
And I just wanted to mention to your point around students who might be significantly below grade level, right? This is the assessment that will allow teachers to see, okay, I'm teaching a seventh grade class, but this student is actually missing foundational skills from fifth grade and standards there. So now, these are the things they need to be explicitly taught to move them to the next progression, okay? So it's like, when in response to this data, it's like, we needed to know more and put it in the teacher's hands because they're the folks who do, will move the students the most. We can admire the problem all day, but our teachers are the ones who have to plan for it, right?
And that, and that answers on the next slide.
I'm sorry, Ohisa, do you have a question?
So I see you kind of sort of already answered my question. So the data that we're seeing here is grouped by grade level, but we're using this also to identify the individual students that may be at need. And if, and being able to better identify these students, are numbers for additional services and special needs numbers going up because of this ability to better identify them?
It's not that they necessarily go up, but they get specific and clear, right? So you can look at an assessment from the spring of last year, but now you really wanna know how they're doing this year and progressing throughout the year. So now we are able to give this assessment three times, you know, three different benchmarks, and it gives targets and goals that that student is supposed to reach, as well as stretch goals.
The other thing, if I could just add, the hope is, is if we can find out where students are struggling earlier on and provide more targeted and prescribed interventions, that we'll be able to get kids on or back on track sooner. And good interventions actually should in theory reduce the referrals to special education and the need for long-term services. There's a ton of research, particularly around reading, that if you can catch kids and get them back on track at the elementary grade levels, particularly for third grade, that the need for special education services and author services are significantly decreased. So not to say that we sometimes aren't surprised by things and say, hmm, we may need to consider a referral, because we certainly do that. But really, the hope is in the intervention services, so those student support specialists that Kara referenced earlier are really critical to make sure that we can provide quick and targeted interventions at the individual student level so that we prevent long-term problems for kids.
So I'm sorry, so these assessments are given three times during the course of the school year?
So we have a lot of different assessments depending on the grade level of the students. So the I-Radi assessment, which Kara's referencing as part of STEM K-12, that's actually K-8. So we haven't had a math assessment that's been vertically aligned in place, really, ever. I think we had STAR, but students went at the youngest levels, it wasn't really appropriate and wasn't capturing into the kindergarten. So now we have a K-8, that's three times a year. In ELA, we have I-Radi, also with the ELA side of it, 6E. But then K-5, they take the DIBELS assessment. And so we're limited somewhat in which assessment we can give by the state. It needs to be also a dyslexia screener and different things. But, so it's a different assessment, but we do that three times a year as well.
You know, a lot of this is like alphabet soup to me. Is it possible to do like a chart for each grade what tests you do?
Oh, for sure, yeah.
I can set it to.
Yeah, we have a teaching and learning guide.
Yeah, just to get it straight in my mind.
Yeah, it's published in a teaching and learning guide.
Thank you.
Okay, so do you wanna continue?
Yeah.
So what you see here on the K-12 side are just different components for, so Melissa and I do, for example, these are some of the efforts that are happening in the STEM area. And again, the I-Radi component has been a huge piece to implementing this year and learning and getting our, not just our teachers, but our administrators up to speed on how to use this powerful system and how to partner with her in their building. So there's been a lot of work, I'll just go into each generically to what's here and if you have any questions, certainly happy to answer those. We've done a lot of work this year on understanding standards more deeply and marrying that with professional development and placing the right tools in the hands of teachers so that they can understand where to support students and how to bring in foundational knowledge to remediate areas, but then also to accelerate when students are ready for more. So there'll be continued work on that. This is not a, this is not a short-term plan. This is a continual plan over time that we're gonna be working on for some time. We've done a lot of work in all of the content areas in rolling out new programs that have high-quality resources that are aligned to the state's standards. And so one of the, I'll say silver linings of the pandemic was the ability to be able to acquire resources that we haven't had at the elementary for some time. And so we've been purchasing and purchasing and purchasing, and we feel that we've outfitted the teachers' classrooms with quite a bit in grade level and intervention fits that span or range now that is more appropriate to what we're seeing in classrooms, and then also targeting out time for what you mentioned. The biggest professional development that you'll see kind of happening in all eight areas is really around the idea of standards. And not just to teach a curriculum or to follow pacing in a way that doesn't make it easy to learn to really dig into, dig into those standards. Kara wants to mention a little bit about some of the, I don't think you mentioned MindPath, but MindPath is some of the areas that we have as an adaptive learning piece that can prescribe practice for students in a targeted area. So if you remember, like in iXL, some other programs that we have, the Math MindPath, it responds to the assessment piece in I-Radi. And so it's another very powerful tool. We'd love to expand that at some point, but we'll see how, we'll see where we are maybe this time next year. And again, focusing on sense-making, mathematical computation skills, and then making sure that we have high-quality curriculum, resources in the hands of our teachers. As I mentioned before, you can go to that, that was good, thank you. As I mentioned before, we invested a lot around beginning to get our literacy program off the ground. We invested in being a reader program, which is a structured phonics program. We rolled that out in the middle of the pandemic. And I think we're seeing some good results of that in the number of students that are reducing that need intensive intervention, which is great coming into the middle school. We are looking forward to, and need to implement a program in 2023, a literacy program. So we're still in a research process. The list has, the state has produced a list for us to begin making decisions around, and we can talk more about that in our curriculum group in November. I'm happy to update on that as well. And again, there are a couple of different assessments. We'll share that out with the boards, that they understand what type, different types of assessments and what they need. And then again, targeted intervention program in K-5, and then universal screening with the DIBELS, as Kara wants to mention. And then all of our professional development, again, centered around understanding the standards. Next slide, please. So similarly, in Indiana, these are the 612 level. Again, I-Radi is gonna be a big part of the work and understanding of the teachers and the leadership of the department, teachers that are there in pumping our teachers' sense-making from the data that we're seeing. They've dedicated a lot of time to creating space in data teams. Part of that, and it's not listed here on this slide, but has been an investment in something called PLC Plus, which is really how to, how to take your team and your group and engage in a system of continuous learning and to self-organize yourself for success. So we were happy to be able to introduce that to some of our staff as well. We've invested in, sorry, let's miss on here. Okay, the Shelter ELA for multilanguage learners. So we provided some additional sheltered classes. So we pushed our side of coaches to some of our courses to support some of our second language learners, and that's been very successful. The goal of that is to help build background knowledge that kids, again, can access the curriculum. Down to 912, we are utilizing iXL a little bit more, I mentioned that, maybe you're familiar with that, again, to increase personalized learning for students. We are starting to bring in more SAKD-aligned sources, this will be a focus for me in my work with the high school. I feel like we need to do a little bit more in this area. Pre-pandemic, probably about five or six years ago, we had some benchmarks that were really informative. Pushed kids to write really hard, really rigorously, I should say. And we're looking to bring some of those back and do more work in writing, which helps kids process through reading. So we'll be working strategically with the high school owners for a prudent plan on strategies around SAKD specifically. We purchased Nozella Pro, in partnership with some of the work with Advance. It's a reading assessment tool, but it's also mainly used. The teachers are able to print, for example, that article that I mentioned, A-Rod, and his home run. You can print that article, download it, and the teacher can use it at the 12th grade level of contextual complexity, or at the third grade level, or any level in between. So it's very powerful, so that students can read the same story and understand, have the same work on comprehension, but they're all paced when needed. And in the special areas, we've done some organizational interesting things in the way of bringing in some of our special area teachers to do an extra lesson with the students so that we can release to teachers to have PLCs so that they can take a look at their data a little bit more deeply and spend more time doing that. So getting creative with how we implement that. So just some other district actions. As you know, we have been working on our ELG, our systematic ELD program. We are still in the process of rolling that out. We are at the K-8 level, hoping to move on to high school next year or possibly the year after. We're trying to pool our resources to support both K-5 and 68 right now with our side of coaches. We've been increasing on deliberate, on increasing the, sorry, focusing on increasing the quality of our ESL multilingual services. So there's been a lot of professional development and training around there. And not just for the teachers, but also for the administrators so they can walk in and understand what should be happening and be able to provide feedback on that. We've had side coaching institutes, we have side coaches in our district, and they help our teachers to provide strategies for our multilanguage learners to, again, to access the curriculum and to provide suggestions on ways to engage. We, two years ago, we started to move our bilingual program, a Spanish program at Broadview Park. We had a Portuguese program over at Broadview. And we had enough students, and we would bus students accordingly. That was tough for the students, it's tough on families, and it kind of makes them break the disconnection for folks. We had enough students who needed both Spanish and Portuguese in both school areas. So we complemented the programs on both sides. And we're in the second year of the bilingual program migration over to Broadview Middle School, and we continue to support that. We've increased our, offered our new immigrant after-school camp. So that is, some of the SRMBI has been used to support our second language learners in their needs. I'd say they probably maybe struggled most during the pandemic in terms of access. And so we are targeting some after-school work to do a little bit of catch-up with some of our activities to give them some more skills and some more time with developing language. And intervention and support, so again, we've focused a lot of our efforts around intervention. We've maintained our SRBI paras. Again, those are important positions in our schools, they're very valuable, particularly at K-5. And Kelly and her team have implemented a lead grant support for students who are chronically absent and put some great strategies in to reduce that number and it's been very effective. At the principal level, next slide please. We invest heavily, and are intending to invest heavily in the future in our principals. The research shows that a high-quality principal is one of the lead contributors to the effectiveness and outcomes of the school. And as a result, we have dedicated more time and investment in our principals, their learning, and also in accountability systems around school outcomes with the chiefs of schools who are working with all of our principals. Now, we're targeting work in school improvement and the meeting on a regular basis. And we're doing a lot of calibration work, a lot of data work. Kara wants to push this to all of those meetings and stuff like that. We continue to organize ourselves around those. Again, PLC Plus work, targeted PE cycles, I-Radi leadership training. And we, a small group of us are, who supervise principals that be the assistant superintendent, that be Kelly Truches and myself, along with the two chiefs are engaging in very in-depth training through the center of educational leadership itself to improve our skills in supporting and improving the skills of our principals.
And I just wanted to say, honestly, you know, at a national level, people are... And I just wanted to say, honestly, you know, at a national level, people are, um, calling this a need for urgent response. And that, and that's where we are as a district as well. Um, I've been meeting with the principals, um, and talking about where students are, individual students, and then planning for them, as well as what they need to be doing for school improvement and planning outside of the regular, right? So these are deep meetings that are being done, um, on a regular basis, pushing into schools. The chief of schools are present there as well, at least as the superintendents as well, and, and myself. And we're, we're pushing into grade levels for teachers. Um, we're talking about what their data has, is, looks like now and actually what it looked like pre-pandemic and, and, and that piece and what our historical data looks like over time and getting into the standards for folks. I mean, this is really where the work is. The teachers and principals are working very hard to meet these students, and we're trying to respond to help them do that work in the best way possible.
Back at the last page, there was a, uh, bullet about a revised New Commerce Curriculum, DHS. What is that?
So, so when students first arrive here, they, we, we did not have a new commerce program for a very long time. Um, we did pilot a program a few years ago, um, where we have a very targeted curriculum, uh, on the basics to acquire, um, basic, basic information, basic language vocabulary. Um, and they come, that's different from another group of students who are more ready for the next level of, of, in their development along with continuum. And so each year they make tweaks and adjustments to the new commerce curriculum. Um, but also the demographics of our students have changed, oh, well, or, or changed over the couple, last couple of years. We're seeing more students with interrupted education. So that, so in some cases, it could mean that a student has not been in school at all. Um, and so their needs may look a little bit different than, than other students. And so, uh, we made adjustments in, in, in what's offered during, uh, during the class time that the students are, are, are with their teacher. So we've dedicated time for new commerce. You're welcome.
I thought we were moving away from iExcel. There are, so.
It's mainly, it's mainly based out. We do, we have good resources in terms of personalized tools across the district. The high school has the least amount of, of tools, and so it's, it's really at the nine, twelve level. Um, so they're still using it, um, pretty heavily for, for, for practice. Um, it's not meant to replace instruction, really, it's meant to reinforce it. It's a skill area that a teacher can assign, practice in an area.
So MindPath at the middle school level has replaced that, then having a higher level of adapt, adaptivity based on their score on the assessment?
Just a comment, um, as we're looking at this, this map that you guys put together about how to create these improvements in the classroom and for students, it really dovetails so nicely with the presentation we have, the strategic plan. Um, I can see exactly how you guys have, you know, kind of created this, like, these standards around the data that you're looking at. Uh, and I really appreciate that offer of your approach, so thank you.
Thank you.
You have to excuse me, too. In all my years at Westcon, I never used, heard the term of culture used in teaching or course development. So times are different now, I guess.
Any thought to, um, bring back PSAT as for the middle school student?
So we tried that for two years, um, and I was the big proponent of pushing that in. Um, we had big logistical issues with the validity of the test. We cannot, uh, in terms of following the rules for PSAT.
Hold on one second, I can't hear Mr. Russo. Can you keep it down? Can you just keep it down?
My apologies.
Thank you.
Um, it, the, there are certain, uh, there's table lengths, there are so many feet apart that you have to be, uh, to take the test or consider valid. Um, and when we have SAT and PSAT at the high school, we rent tables, they spread out from the gym, it's a pretty big, big deal. We just don't have the space. So we really, we're not assessing, uh, in a way that the test is meant to assess. So we struggled greatly with that. Um, I, I do, would still like to bring back, we can find a way. Um, but it has definitely been, uh, so we, we, we still do have opportunities to take SAT items and PSAT items and bring them in to, to the middle school. Um, that was some of the original intent, was to do some pre-work to prepare students. And more importantly, um, one of the things that kind of fell by the wayside, uh, as the, when the pandemic came on is the, we linked, the whole purpose of that was to get kids linked in eighth grade, connect to Khan Academy. So when they go to the high school, they're already pre-programmed into the improvement, um, you know, the improvement courses that are offered for free. There's some research behind Khan Academy, for example, and thirty hours of Khan Academy raises your SAT scores on points. Uh, so we are looking to, to encourage more of that. Um, but the, it doesn't mean that we can't do something with it. It's just the, the expense of the PSAT that we were, that we were, you know, utilizing and the lack of being able to follow and adhere to the rules of the assessment was problematic for us. Yeah.
I'm gonna, to go all the way back to the beginning.
Okay.
For our preschool program.
Yes.
That's just Danbury students, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Make exceptions for our district students?
Not at the preschool.
No.
Occasionally you might hear students that reside in other towns. Um, we may have some students, um, that are placed through DCF in a neighboring town or things like that. So it's not unheard of, but they are all the responsibility of the Danbury public schools. Um, so they are a hundred percent our students. Um, I've commented about that. School readiness is also Danbury, that's what I'm saying.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kara.
I don't have much for, um, for chairperson to report except to say, um, I want to thank the board members that came out. Thank you, um, the Eldwood, and I'm moving house and thank you Kate for organizing that through the community relations committee. It was very nice of them, and a great turnout, and, you know, just a nice way to bring out the community at the end of the time after we've laid some tiles. Thank you, Lauren, for putting that together. Um, does anybody have any, um, more communications comments or updates?
So I have DSABC, um, we had a person meeting, um, and they are looking for mentors, um, desperate need of mentors. They've started, um, DSABC is in more schools, number schools, elementary schools. So they are desperate need of mentors, if you're interested, to reach out. Um, and then November ninth, they're having, um, a foundation for your future, future program, seven PM for high school seniors. And they've started the seats for STEM program, which is the K-8 program.
Lauren, can I just ask, they, uh, does DS, DSABC, um, what's the commitment for mentors, you know? They talked about that.
Um, I don't know exactly what the commitment is, but, um, soon.
Queen, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
She's going to reach out to me, she can, you know, say yes.
Sure.
Know what it is.
Thank you.
Can I just add for a second? Typically, it's a, it's a commitment of one student to meet one student. If you took on more than one student, that it would be more frequent. But it's usually during lunch for about half an hour or so.
Thanks, Ellen.
Yeah, sure.
Any other, um, media updates or contact? I will ask for a motion that the Board of Education move into executive session to discuss a matter involving a student event that would result in disclosing a public record that is exempt from disclosure. Moved by, is that Julie?
Yeah.
Oh, Julie, seconded by Michelle.